Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting for May 6th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Upal.
Present.
Council member Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, council member Ross and Mayor Potemsemer are not in attendance.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Next, we have citizen comments. Is there any citizen comments in regards to this, to item number six? Presentation, we actually have... So we have a presentation in closed session items, six, seven, and eight. Is there any citizen comments on the phone? Here and none. Coming back into the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 5:30, 5:39. So we do have a presentation, item number six, presentation by Mario Gueva and Gueva Engineering, and this will be led by the engineering department.
Thank you, mayor, council, and member of the audience. So we'll have a present, it's kind of a lengthy presentation. We'll try to go through it as fast as we can. It'll focus on infrastructure and city engineering, just an overview of what we do. So the, let's see. There you go. So like I said, we'll focus on infrastructure and city engineering. You know, try, try your luck.
Yeah.
There you go. So the engineering department, this presentation was structured into two major areas, infrastructure, capital projects, and then city engineering and private development. The intent is to provide city council and the community an overview of what we do. Now, the department navigates through the processes and complexities of engineering tasks in many areas. There'll be enough emphasis on infrastructure with special attention given to water and transportation infrastructure project. We'll be looking at completed projects within the last 10 years, ongoing projects, and the future projects. We have a number of our engineers here that focus on specific areas of the department. They'll be addressing the areas that they focus on here as we, as we go along. So this slide basically shows the completed projects for the last 10 years, and it is color-coded in terms of water, sewer, storm, streets, and parks. It does have the project value here on the, on the left, so you'll see that it sets a trend and shows that a lot of the projects were completed prior to 2021. After that, there's been a lot fewer projects completed. And I didn't, we, we have a slide at the end for questions, but if you have questions as we go along, it's probably better than saving it to the end, so feel free to just jump in and ask questions. Next. So we'll, we'll start with infrastructure, capital projects, and water being the first ones here. I'll turn it over to, to Nick.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So this is just an outline of what we'll run through with some of the water projects in the following slides. It'll include completed water projects, water project work plan, overview, water system capacity, some of the updates on the TCP progress, go over some of the water sources, and then have project map and summary, as long, as well as the water line replacements. So here's a little summary list of the water projects completed over the last 10 years. The list shows six treatment projects, some, a new well, and then a tank project. Probably the most significant ones to look at with that are well 17, the new well, and also the treatment facility that was constructed with it. And then also to point out, it's not listed on the list, but well, well 13 arsenic treatment system was also constructed in this timeframe, in 2015, 2016. And then at the bottom of that, it lists two water line projects that have been completed since 2015. One of them was the CDBG water line replacement, which we have an exhibit later on in the slides showing the location of it, and then also the Ice Street water line replacement. So here's the waters project work plan. On the left-hand column, you'll see the project titles or project names, followed by the funding sources, estimated, estimated cost of the project, and then the fiscal year, as far as when it's anticipated to be either designed, bid, or constructed. And again, we'll go into these in more detail with the later slides, but just a quick run-through on each one. So well number 8A replacement is the one that is currently in construction with an estimated cost of around $4 million. Well number 18 is currently in design, and the test well for that was just recently completed in, in April, so that one is moving forward with, with the design on that. The third one there is well number 19 with TCP wellhead treatment. That's a project that was initially looked at to be constructed over behind Foster Farms and is still waiting to be negotiated on, and that's something, again, we'll go in further in later slides. TCP Phase 2 and 3, so those are the Arkilian Park centralized TCP treatment plant and the well 8 expanded TCP treatment plant. Those, those are going to be funded through SRF and with a $27 million grant that's currently being applied for by the city. And expect, and then the following there.
Quick question, Nick?
Yes, yes.
Just, just for, since we have public, they might not know what the abbreviations are of PE, CON, bid. You can just share.
Oh, the CON, PE, bid. Yeah, so underneath the fiscal years where it says PE, that would be preliminary engineering. So that would contain any planning, permitting, environmental documents that would need to be taken care of in order to complete the design for the project and also the design itself. Bidding is, follows the design phase where the project will go out to bid through the competitive bid process, and then CON, it just stands for construction, so once it's actually awarded to a project and starts construction. Okay. The next project there was the well number 8A arsenic treatment plant. That one is also in design, and one of the key points to point out with that one is that it is going, it is anticipated that that one will be constructed concurrently with the TCP Phase 3, which is the well 8 expanded TCP treatment site, so that'll be constructed concurrently with the well 8 arsenic project. Then you have the Ice Street water line replacement Phase 2 project, which actually received bids last month, and again, we'll go on that later with some of the follow-up slides.
Yeah, there's a couple, like the water master plan, we, we put it in, we put it in here also, even though it's unfunded, because that's one of the things we've been mentioning for a long time, that because you don't have, you do not, do not have a general plan, you should have the general plan and then have master plans prepared based on that general plan. So it's just a placeholder at this point, whenever the city decides to move forward with that, that's fine. And then there's the last one there being the infrastructure drawings update, they're in dire need of being updated again. It's unfunded at, at this point.
Quick questions, gentlemen. For these treatment plants that we'll be constructing for TCP and for arsenic, Mr. Mayor, there's conversations that we've had, you've mentioned issues prior to you coming here of our water system being decentralized, and I know we've been able to hybridize it a little bit, but for these specific treatment plants, will they be able to filter arsenic and TCP from other wells as well, or will it only be for the, like for the arsenic treatment plant for 8A, will that only do 8A and et cetera?
They will. I'll let Nick answer that. We both know the answer, but I'll...
Yeah, so the, what's listed up there is the Phase 2 TCP project is, that's the one that is going to be constructed at Arkilian Park and is only going to be treating TCP. Now, the one that's listed as TCP Phase 3 and will be constructed concurrently with the well 8 arsenic, 8A arsenic treatment plant will be sized to treat water from the three wells that are utilizing that centralized treatment site.
Yeah. So yeah, the, the one at Arkilian will treat 12, 13, and 17. The one up here at 8A, or well 8, will treat 9, 18, 8A obviously, and then 19, 19 will be on its own, so.
Now, broader answer to that is that each, each well has different constituents, you know, so not all wells have arsenic or not all wells have magazine, manganese, or TCP. And so the, the idea of centralization is to, the closest wells that are viable and feasible will be basically converged together and have one location for a multiple treatment process. And in certain occasions, you actually have a certain media that will, where you get a twofer, where it actually will address two different constituents and not just one.
Yeah, thank you. And you already have that with well 14 and 16, northeast side of the city, at the street for TCP manganese, iron.
And then one other thing to mention too, with the, the centralized treatment plant at Arkilian Park, so like Mario said, it's going to treat waters also from well 13 and 17, and both of those sites have wellhead treatment already for arsenic and iron and manganese removal.
Quick follow-up. Once all of these treatment plants are constructed, is the expectation that our levels of arsenic and TCP will be within compliance?
Yes.
That's the goal?
Yeah.
Let me just add a little bit. Over time, council member Upal, like arsenic, the parts per billion has changed over time as technology gets a little bit better, you know, then the state starts to move that needle. And so I'm trying to remember, going all the way back to the early 2000s, I think it was 50 parts per billion, and, and so, and so the, the goal here is to make sure that we meet, you know, that whatever the new state standards are, whether it be for arsenic or any other constituents. And then arsenic is one of those elements that's actually naturally occurring in the soil itself, so it's not like TCP where it's a foreign contaminant. But, but the goal is to address the, the parts per billion or the parts per million that they require.
Yeah. And for instance, TCP was unregulated until just a few years ago, so now it's very strictly regulated, and it's basically, if you detected, you're out of compliance, and it's five parts per trillion. So it's very, yeah, if you, if you find it, then you're out of, out of compliance. So the MCL, the maximum contaminated levels do change, like the city manager referred to, so you basically, everyone has to be chasing, chasing a moving target. As things get tighter, you have to then look at, arsenic being, it went from 50 to, now it's 10, so.
And I wanted to follow up on that just because we're having a town hall next Monday. I expect water to be one of the biggest issues, specifically the quality in relation to these constituents. So again, I just want to put this on the record now. Based on what we're seeing up here, the expectation is that after the completion of these treatment plants, we will be within compliance for arsenic and TCP.
Yeah, whatever water gets treated through those plants, yeah, it'll, it'll be within, within MCL.
So, so let me, let me generalize a little that, a little bit broader. So we have to meet Title 22 drinking standards for the state, and so we do continuous sampling of all of the, you know, our water in town, and so we're, we're supposed to meet, at all times, meet Title 22 drinking standards. Now, once in a while, of course, when they're, when we're not meeting that for whatever reason, then we have to basically, we, we, there's instructions and we have to notify the public, and sometimes we have to tell them to boil water and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But the city's goal is to always meet Title 22 drinking standards. And every year, we send out what is called the Consumer Confidence Report, and in that Consumer Confidence Report, it tells you, you know, the constituents, where the MCL limits are, et cetera. And to go even a little bit further than that, whenever you don't meet, let's say that we're off by a teensy bit over the MCL, basically all that means is that if you drink a liter of water every day for the next 70 years, you have a 10% chance of getting cancer, as an example. So that's how that world is looked at.
Just one quick question for reference and then for people that are watching or that can, are going to be watching this later. If you look at a well number 8 arsenic, no, wait, yes, arsenic treatment plant, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, from the top, where it has the ARPA funds, 656, just for reference and for people that might still be asking, it's like, you know, ARPA funds are still, are still showing up, and then, so can you explain what does it mean that those, those numbers are in parentheses?
ARPA, yeah. Maybe finance or the city manager can address that, because those are the numbers we're given, we don't come up with them, but that's what the city has provided for partial funding for that. I don't know if Happy can talk to that.
Okay, and then, and then so the, the other half of the question, the other part of the question would be, you know, what that means, and then if those are funds that are still there to be used for that project, don't they have a, a due date by, like, those funds need to be used by? What does that mean? If you look at, I think it's number 5 from the top down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you, can, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. And you can ask.
So the ARPA, is it on? Yeah. So the ARPA funds have already been allocated for the project that the council allocated or they approved. I think it was a past meeting that you guys approved on it, so that's already been reported to the state, but we do have to spend them by December of '25.
So that was my question, so.
I think, I think we only got like 6 something left, I believe, like 656.
656.
656 or 655 is what's left remaining of the ARPA funds.
Okay. So, and then since '24, '25, it's pre-engineering.
Preliminary engineering, preliminary engineering, yeah.
Yeah, and we can, we can elaborate on that. I think you, are you going to spend that before the end of the year? Is that basically your question?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let Nick, Nick answer that.
Go ahead.
Just broader comment on all of this. So as you can see, where we have preliminary engineering and bid and con, of course, you have a cost estimate, and so every year, there's a running total of money being expended. And so, so over here where it says funding, you know, there, there might be a pool of different funding sources, and so different money is being used and could, like, in this case, Happy talked about the ARPA funds. Since I wasn't here the last few years, I didn't know what, if that was expended, but it should have been, because there was a, a drop dead date on that. So just broad.
Nick will elaborate a little bit on that, and I think he'll answer the mayor's question.
Yeah, and so with the ARPA funds having the expenditure date of December of 2025, one of the thoughts behind that is being able for the city to pre-purchase the arsenic treatment vessels, that way you are able to utilize the full funding amount and not let it go away.
Yeah, which the city has done in the past with other projects. So if you pre-purchased the equipment, you're saving on a markup from a contractor and on time, because they can start getting those rolling, you know, and manufacturing those. If they're incorporated into a project, that contractor is going to have to purchase those, then you have these long lead times plus the markup.
Yeah, so my main question was that, because, you know, from what I remember in regards to ARPA funds, we would have a, a date.
They have a sunset, yes.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we have, you know, we're not going to lose that money. Thank you.
Okay, but, okay. Yeah, this one, I know, I know we've gone over this several times, but anyway, the water supply, all, all those wells, and I know we've talked about all, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17. I know now we're bringing 15 on the standby status for, in the summer, for short term. The water, the, the production, the firm production capacity, 7,200 gallons, that's the biggest well off, and maximum day demand is 66, so now you do have some capacity to meet MDD. And new well sources are, we're also looking at that, we'll go through that here in a little bit.
And, and just for the public, the MDD is maximum daily demand, so that way folks.
Yeah, maximum day demand. And water demand there on the right, you can just see the trend when, during the drought, drought, it did go down significantly, and then it peaked in 2020, then it came down, it's going up again, so that's basically the trend. Water system capacity, this, this is the table that we prepared here a few months ago, and that's basically a running tab of what's available and what's being allocated to projects as they come in, as will serve later. So as, as of today, about 460 gallons per minute available, which is about half the size of a well. I'll turn it over to Nick.
Okay, the next two slides are going to talk about some of the TCP-related projects. There's a, project numbers listed 1 through 5. Project number 1 has already been completed, which was the well 14 and 16 centralized TCP treatment plant, which included the raw water line from well 14 to well 16, and then the centralized treatment plant being constructed at well 16. And the city did receive a funding agreement for $4 million through SRF for that one, and the project was completed in 2021. The loan repayment was included in the, the new rate study that was completed for, for the city. And then listed there is project number 2 is Arkilian Park centralized treatment, which will remove TCP from wells numbers 12, 13, and 17, and includes the 1 million gallon storage tank. And then project number 3 is well number 8A site expanded centralized treatment, which will remove TCP from wells number 8A, 9, 18, and will include a 1.5 million gallon storage tank. And then again, just to point out, those two projects are the ones currently still included with the SRF application for that $27 million. Project number 4, I guess I gotta flip the slide. Project number 4 is well number 18, which, based on the current location, is the, the one that had the test well that was just drilled over at Lucero Park, and this well will be treated for TCP removal at well 8A centralized treatment site.
And we'll go through those in more detail if needed. We have some slides coming up.
And then well number 19 with wellhead TCP treatment. Again, that, so that one is on hold. It's the one over on the Foster Farms property that was in negotiations with the city a while back. So again, just to reiterate, the $27 million grant right now covers projects 2 and 3, and initially those two, that $27 million was anticipated to be a 75% grant and a 25% loan component, and as of right now, it's supposed to be a 100% grant for the project, so no payback on that one. And projects 2 through 4, which is the two centralized treatment sites, and then well number 18, all three of those are anticipated to be completed by 2028. So as far as new, new wells and surface water for water sources, the next four, or the top four bullet points will go into a little bit more depth in the following slides, but it'll talk about the new wells and then surface water. And then item 5 there was other potential well locations, which included alternative sites that we explored and looked at for possible opportunities to construct the additional wells at, but have, as of this point, haven't been selected or anything like that for a well site. And that included the old well number 18 site, which was negotiated with Foster Farms, or has not been negotiated.
Has not.
Has not been. And then a potential well at Arkilian Park to replace the old well that was there, which had arsenic there, so would require additional treatment most likely. And then also looked at Don Meyer Park or potentially the existing storage tank site.
Yeah, and these were, these were some that we looked at, at properties that city owned, and they're large enough to accommodate these facilities, because as you start getting into treatment facilities, you do need some, some room. If it's just the well, it's obviously a lot less room needed, but those are potential locations.
Looking at item number 3, which is pretty much included in item number 5 for other potential well locations, question number one is, so that is, the original idea was to eventually have, I believe, two wells?
19 is one well. You're talking about the $42 million project was two wells, 18 and 19. 18, the city never went through the negotiations for the site behind the car wash, so that went away. Engineering and Public Works came up with the possibility of doing that at Lucero Park, which is fairly close to the, the centralized treatment plant, and came to the council, and that's how that got initiated, and now it's moving forward. Well 19, the property was appraised, there was negotiations, it was included in the, in an amended application to SRF, so it kept going, and then the, the city never finished negotiations for, with that, and then ultimately SRF took the wells off anyway. So we're basically back to square one, yeah. And that, that one, at that site there would have well treatment, would be a wellhead treatment, meaning that the treatment would be done at that site. So that one there is like 10 mil, so it's a very expensive one.
And then, and then so, good, you, you answer a question before I ask the question, so that's good. Because, you know, so we have, on one, we have well 19, and then the other one is well 18. So then well 18 would be the one that would be behind, on the back part of Foster Farms, right?
It'll, it'll be in Lucero, well 18 will be Lucero Park.
Never mind, I'm getting confused, yes.
19 will be, it will be on, by the railroad there, on, on, it's like west of Foster Farms a little bit, yeah. It's like west of Foster Farms a little bit. Yeah.
And then being that is, it wouldn't be a problem that is well inside. Like, I mean, it's not on the edge of Foster Farms property. It's kind of like a little bit.
It's actually on Foster Farms property.
Yeah.
But the city was pursuing an easement or purchasing that piece. So it was actually appraised. It went as far as being appraised and I think was appraised twice. And then it just didn't go anywhere after that. About, no, no, four, three, four years ago.
And then by the selection of potential well, look, other well locations, is it just based on because it's just, those are city properties versus, oh, we did a study or there's, this one has a better potential because of the what, because of the underground structure or?
Well, we know enough about the the substrata here to realize that everywhere you do it, you're gonna get TCP. So it doesn't matter where you do it. Odds are that you will also get arsenic and or manganese or iron. So those, that's basically what you will likely to get some of. Some of that may be above MCL, some may not be. So we do not have any recent testing at those to know. To to answer your question, you'd have to do a test well, do a test like we just did with 18. So we don't know the the quality of the water or if there's adequate strata that that produces water. So we always look for producing strata so that you get a fair amount of water and then quality. So those are the two big criteria that we look for.
And then so looking at at least Arkalian and Don Meyer Park options, would it be a recommendation to do test wells there?
Oh, absolutely.
And then both at the same time and figure out which one is best suited for, you know, if we, if we only have an option of one, where we would, which one would be best?
Right. There are several considerations. You want to do it on the north side of 99? Or you want to do it on the south side of 99? So that's one of the big considerations. Well, if you just say, okay, we're gonna do one on the south side, then you have the ability to do it at Arkalian, which over there you will already have a treatment plant. So that will be a big plus because you have a treatment plant there already. So you could get one there. You could look at look at one at the tank site. You'd likely would need to have well head treatment there because it's pretty far from any of the centralized plants. So that would be very pricey. So there's a whole number of things that we have to look at. At this point, it's just being brought up and it was, has been brought up recently that these could be some sites to look at. The city already owns the property. They're large enough to do, to construct the facilities that we think may need to be constructed at those sites.
And you got right to my point when, because a lot of times, I mean, this is something that I just recently learned also. And, you know, more people that are watching, it's, it's not just build the well. It's got to look at where is it located? How close or how far it is from where we're gonna need to connect it to? Is it, you know, is it, do we have a a treatment plant nearby or not? And so it's just where the cost of where the well is gonna be at plus all of the other additional costs that will be need.
Correct.
To be added and it's not just built two wells.
Correct. And then operations and maintenance too. Because if you get into.
And then and then versus north and south of 99. Because, you know, that is also something that I learned and said, well, just build them, right? Well, it's not just build them. How we're gonna get, get a connection.
Even though the city is all network, meaning every pipe is connected, everything is connected. However, you only have two crossings under 99. So those are your bottlenecks, so to speak. As as you know, the the highest demand is on the north side, obviously, for the the large business there. So you do need a lot of water there. Otherwise, you'd be bringing water from the south. And there's a lot of law, it's called head losses. I don't want to get into technical stuff. But you'd be better off having some on the north side. South side too, I mean, if you only have a choice of being on the south side, it's better than, I mean, you get, you get what you can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. On item one, two, three, five, I see good potential. When you're talking about water takeout from Merced River, wouldn't that be a long shot? Because there's going to be a lot more communities involved than that downstream?
Yes.
Both sides of the river, that's gonna be.
Yes, and I have a slide, I have a slide on that. If you want to talk about it when we get to that one, it'll be coming up shortly. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, and I'll share several.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just a little quick overview of some of the the projects right now. So well number A is currently in construction, started in September 2023. So when this project was put out to bid, the anticipation was that well number AA was going to be a replacement to well number eight. At this point, the intent is to keep both wells and active on a temporary basis. So that's the direction that this project is moving forward right now. And the construction is anticipated to be completed early 26.
Nick, real quick, that's fall of this year, right? Is our anticipated timeline?
For for which one?
For this one, for AA.
Say that again.
AA? Oh, AA, I'm on 18 here.
What was it?
The question is completion. Completion is ended this year, early next year.
Yeah, thank you.
We're talking about calendar here, right? Yeah.
Okay, here's well number 18. Like we mentioned, it's over at Lucero Park. And the water produced from this well will ultimately be treated for TCP removal at the well AA centralized treatment site. The test well was completed in April. And the city, to update that third bullet point there, the city has actually at this point now received the water quality results. And it does show the presence of TCP in there. And there was some arsenic down at the at the deeper levels. But it was a lot more minimal at the shallower depths. So as soon as we got above 400 feet, we didn't see it anymore. As far as the project itself, it will include the new well, a building and emergency backup generator and then site surface improvements.
And we've talked about this one quite a bit. We'll talk a little more.
So here's the location for well number 19. As we mentioned, it is over on the backside of Foster Farms property. And this project would include the new well building and then the TCP wellhead treatment facilities at the site, also emergency backup generator and site surface improvements. This one had the test well completed in 2022. And the property, this is the one that Mario had mentioned. It was appraised and supposed to be negotiated and and hasn't, hasn't been at this point for it. And then, and on April 9th, the water board actually came to the city of Livingston. And we met with them and talked about potential funding options for well number 19. So it's something that is being looked at right now.
So we're looking at possibly initiating another application for, and that's what the state is looking into. Programs that can fund these wells, given the challenges that the state is having with money and that sort of.
How receptive did they seem?
They're very receptive.
Yeah, that's good.
We we met less than a month ago over here. And he actually came out of Sacramento.
Yeah, now, you know, there's, you know, the pros and cons to a well that's out there by its lonesome. Of course, you know, if if we get funding from the state, you know, of course, we'll take it and, you know, and go ahead and and incorporate, you know, the treatment facilities and the emergency backup and all of that. So could that be, you know, a centralized treatment place? Well, unless we built some other wells down the road close by that we can tie in, otherwise it's just gonna be out there on its on its own.
It's gonna have its, yeah, well head treatment, just a a little bit. And I know this has been mentioned before in some of these presentations. But because of proximity to Foster Farms, Foster Farms actually in the past, a few years back, was willing to contribute financially. And that was never nailed down to, you know, pay for the whole thing, some of it, a little bit. So that's, that was a possibility at that time. Since the communication with Foster Farms was pretty much severed a few years back, it has been reinitiated. And I know Public Works and myself met with some of the Foster Farms folks, including the CEO. So we're trying to reignite those possibilities in conjunction with the state. So trying to go however you can, however you can get money. Mr. Wallace, there's your slide. So this actually was brought to the council, I think, 19, I mean, 2018, some, so a few years back. And so what this will consist of is a phased surface water project. You will have some takeouts, it's those three little lines at the top there, takeouts from the from the the river. And they will eventually go into a surface water treatment plant, which is that light blue rectangle there, and then be blended into a hybrid system with groundwater. Eventually, you'll end up with surface water. That's how things are going. But it'll be a lot of years from now. This is something that, as you were saying, other communities may team up. And that would be what you have in the proximity of of this treatment plant. So there's some around here that possibly could team up with this. It's a very pricey, I have that estimated cost there, six, 60 million. It could be as much as 100 million. I priced, I estimated one not far from here, not that long ago, it was over 100 million. It's a lot bigger, though.
Not only that, but there's also a lot of permitting, lead time and stakeholders. Because we would have to work with a number of state agencies, some federal agencies. And then also with MID. However, you know, as you look at, especially with several of the things that are happening, not just in California, but all over, there's a lot of consolidation happening because they don't want a lot of mini little treatment plants here and there. And so, you know, this can certainly potentially be, you know, a regional project where, you know, maybe even the county might jump in because, you know, Keys, which is just, wait a minute, that key is Delhi.
Delhi.
On the other side of the river. And and then keep in mind that, you know, we have years where you have, you know, wet years and then really dry years, you know, where we have droughts and stuff. And so whenever, of course, now we do have, you know, regulations for monitoring groundwater. Before, we didn't have that. And so there's a, there's a, there's a number of different things. But one of the innovative elements to this is that it's not taking water directly from, you know, or the idea is not to take water directly from the river source at at level. It's it's underneath, it would be, it would be underneath the riverbed in taking that water out. And costs have been, and analysis have been done, you know, to look at the costs. But if you have, if if you can get to a point where you have a hybrid system that you're not, you're not 100% dependent on one or the other, it makes your community that much more have a competitive advantage and and cost wise and many other factors.
Good question. And this may be completely out of anybody's expertise. Just curious to know, it's just a thought popping into my head. A lot of this stuff is expensive with water, with energy. Anywhere you look, like high level extraction just costs a lot. I spend a lot of time around researchers, just folks in academia. But one thing that I really have no knowledge of is how much research is being done around high level efficient water extraction, whether to make the process more efficient or to make it cheaper. Any, are any of you aware if there's any like legit research going on right now? Potentially anything, any breakthroughs?
Yeah.
At any universities near us?
Yeah, there's a lot of work being on on that. There's a lot, or a fair amount of these plants already in in existence. So these are basically what we call horizontal wells. So it's kind of like doing a well horizontal rather than a hole in the ground going down. So the technology, and it's improving, but yeah, the technology is there.
Okay, here's a quick map overview for the projects that we just discussed on the north side of 99 to go through them. The the red line there is the project for well 14 and well 16, which was previously completed. The the yellow highlighted area includes the transmission line from well number nine to the centralized treatment site at well AA expanded site and also the storage tank there. And then the blue line shows coming from well 18, the raw water line that would go to well AA centralized treatment site. And then the purple line there shows well number 19, pretty far off the system back by Foster Farms. And then the purple line is what would be a treated water line leaving well number 19 to tie into distribution. And then here on the south side of 99, this is the project associated with the Arkalian Park centralized treatment. The orange highlighted lines would be the areas where the raw water transmission line would be going to Arkalian Park centralized treatment. And then also at Arkalian Park, you would have the storage tank there. And then here's just a quick little summary of the color charts, the colors that were shown in some of the projects we previously discussed. If you look underneath the cost components, there were several projects that were revised. Some of them had to do with the cost increases from manufacturers or labor, equipment, anything like that. And then also included the scopes when they were expanded to include additional wall router lines to treat more wells. And that's, when you look at all of those projects lined up together, that's where you're at that 42 million. But as we mentioned, either earlier this evening or previously, well 18 and 19.
We're taking.
Yeah, were considered ineligible underneath the current funding grant. So the current funding grant is that 27 million for Arkalian Park treatment and then the well AA centralized treatment site.
Gentlemen, good question. One thing that I haven't done yet is sit down with you folks and go over the timeline of the beginning of a well project to the very end, just that entire timeline, everything that needs to be done. And one thing I'm curious about is, we're in 2025, we're expecting completion in 2020. It's about three years that we're looking at. How much of this do you feel is unnecessary potential red tape? Like just timeline stuff that we have to wait for, if any at all?
If if it is funded, then basically takes the red tape out of the, you know, the state and all the permitting and all of that. What's taken a long time is lead times for equipment, primarily controls and electrical. That that's taken a long time. And the specialty items for for the treatment, like the vessels, those are, how long are those taking, Nick?
About nine months for fabrication, once you receive some mittles on them.
So it takes a long time. Yeah.
Do we know, are those manufactured here in California or in America?
They're in the US, yes, but they're not in California.
Okay.
Where's, where's the? I think they're in the Midwest.
Yeah, there's a few of them around.
There's, there's probably three or four. Do you know, Tony, where, yeah? I think they're in the Midwest, but they're all, they're in the United States. Yeah.
So just in theory, if those could be made in two months, we could be seven months faster in our timeline?
Probably not, because all this stuff kind of ties together. So there's, it's like a big puzzle. Even if you have one part of the puzzle, everything kind of has to tie together. These are very complex projects. Yeah.
Just real quick, on on item number three from the top, under funding source, we're looking at 8.5 mil, 8.5 loan and then 15.5 grant. Is that where we are including the $1 million that we got from, that was allocated by Senator Caballero?
That does not include that, I don't believe. So that's in addition to those.
The the $1 million.
It's at well eighteen, you use that well eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we, and this one.
Gentlemen, real quick. And I want to ask this because I, I know they're going to be watching and I know they're going to ask me this question if I don't ask it right now. Certain developers who have been frustrated about water, I can build a well in six months if I wanted to, why does the city need to take three years? What is the difference between their projects and our project and why stuff on our end takes longer versus some of their private stuff might go faster?
Honestly, I don't think they can build a well in six months. I would, I would challenge them to do that today.
But we, but let's go ahead and go through the, the different components so that they understand. First of all, you know, we, we, we have to go, we, when we, when we receive, because we're a government entity, we have to, there's certain protocols and alignments that we have to follow. And then we have to go through, you know, formal steps. But wherever possible, and I'm glad somebody's asking you that question, because in the past, when we had, or I'm not going to say we don't have a relationship with Foster Farms, we have new, a new, we have new players and so we're, we're trying to, we hope to build a great relationship with them. But, but the Fosters from the past, they were open to doing work on wells in their own property and could go a lot faster than we could. And then they turned around and then, you know, did it over the property and so forth and so on. So, so when we can work together with the private sector, that's the best scenario of all. Because if you have a developer that comes in and builds a subdivision and then builds a well and, and then, you know, basically deeds it over to the city, you know, that, that would be awesome. And so we look for those relationships.
And the challenge, if I may, the, the challenges, some of the challenges in doing that is that those wells have to be built to municipal standards. There's a lot of wells that are built, and especially around here, most of these wells are ag wells. You can go sink an ag well fairly fast. A municipal well is totally different, totally different animal.
That's right.
Well, I would just add too, I want to say, might have been four years ago now, five years ago. Probably during Gavin Newsom's first term, he issued an executive order. So now all well permitting has to go to the state first, where it didn't used to. In the Merced Basin, we are considered.
Severely impacted.
Yeah, so you have to have special reporting that documents.
That's right.
Basically, it's like, it's almost like CEQA for wells, right? You have to go through and do extensive reporting on your impacts to neighboring wells. It's a lot more complex than it was four or five years ago, so there's a lot more hurdles. So I would agree with Mario that the timeline based on the additional requirements from the state would make it a lot slower.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. Just for context, I can say that for the longest, until maybe, I don't know, seven years ago or so. You could build a well, if, if you gave a, awarded a well to a contractor, you'd have a well running in nine months. We'd say, oh, it's like having a baby, you know? Those days are gone.
Yeah.
So we can just blame Newsom?
What's that?
We can just blame Newsom then?
I, I'm not blaming anybody. But yeah, there, there's, and all this stuff that Roy was mentioning is all tied to Sigma, which is, yeah, another act that came, came out of here.
In twenty sixteen.
Yeah, a few years ago.
You know, basically groundwater wasn't regulated for the most part back in those days.
So the, these are, yeah, these are pipeline projects that were done. Phase three was done here a few, a few years ago in twenty nineteen, was fully funded by C D B G. That's a great source for obtaining money. It has to be in some areas, you can't just do it in every area of the city, there's some constraints with that. Phase four was planned, it never went forward because of funding. So I think.
And then the next one just shows some of the more recent water line replacements as well. So the first one there on the left is the I Street Water Line Replacement, says phase three A, which was constructed last year. It was a small, smaller project in comparison, it was about a hundred feet, a hundred and ten feet or so.
Thirty-four thousand.
For thirty-four thousand. And then on the right-hand side there, you have I Street Water Line Replacement, says phase three B. So that's a project that was actually bidding last month and the city did receive bids on that just last week for it. So as far as an update on that one, that is one that has been, already received bids and is scheduled to go to the May twentieth council meeting for award. So it should be starting construction here.
I think it came in a little below that.
It did, yes, it did. The, the, the range for all the bids received on that ranged from about a hundred thousand all the way up to about two hundred and five thousand. So obviously with the lowest being right around a hundred for the actual construction itself.
Sewer project. So a lot quicker through these, there was a very sizable one here. I think it was a couple million dollars done a few years back. Let's see.
Twenty-three.
I'm going too fast here. And, and there's, and then there's some other small, smaller projects done here.
Oops, how do I go back? Sorry.
Yeah, some of these. And I, I know we did also, if you want to mention, the one for the sledge.
Yeah, so going back up to the C D B G one first, just to put a little, in more context of that one. That project was about a two point six million dollar project and was completed in twenty twenty-two. And then in addition to the projects listed here was the sledge thickener installation project, which is nearing the tail end of the completion of the actual installation of that project. Just the integration is remaining left for that, to get it tied into the SCADA system.
So on these, we have several fairly small projects. Here's the sledge thickener here. And it is, it's virtually complete, so this, this one is pretty much done. So we do have some, some lift stations here, there's like three or four of them. That will be coming up in the next few years, they kind of scheduled as, as we go along. We're planning on doing a preliminary engineer report, that's what that P R stands for, for the wastewater treatment plant, to evaluate capacity, both hydraulic and loading, as we approach needing to do something to the plant. As at this point, you're still okay, but it's going to be, we're going to need to look at that here in the near future. Another master plan that's listed here, again, it's unfunded and it's going, going to hinge on getting that general plan, plan in place first. So we listed that here as unfunded, along with the, the infrastructure drawing up that, you know, the, the, your existing infrastructure that needs to be updated, the map itself.
Real quick, can you go one slide back, please?
Sure, twenty-three?
Yeah. Yeah, so out of the five capital projects listed there on the bottom, which ones? I'm assuming the, are they, most of them completed, because those, those range from two thousand fifteen to two, twenty twenty-five?
Yes, these are completed.
So all of, all of the five?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and this one was twenty nineteen, so that's okay, that's okay, yeah, this one was. And that's by far the largest, that's multi-million dollar, these are all small ones. Okay, we, we did go through this one. So storm drainage, again, there's not a whole lot, storm drainage is always a challenge for funding. So there's not a whole lot of projects. We have a couple of lift stations here that were completed. And then parks, there's some park, park improvements here, but nothing really major. There's, you know, if you go to the next one, it kind of gives you the magnitude of what these, these end up being, a few hundred thousand dollars. The one that I want to mention more is this Fred Warden Park, because it, every winter, there's some issues with, with that. Because the basin's supposed to be a percolation basin, meaning you don't have a pump, the water just goes away. I'm not sure if it was a design issue or whatever it is, it doesn't really work. It's supposed to, and I know Public Works works diligently trying to rip the bottoms and make it work a little better. But eventually, you're going to need to have a pump station there. We have provided the city quite a few years now, estimated costs of what, what that's going to be. And there's no funding and the costs have obviously have been, I think we started at like three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred, five hundred, we're at eight hundred now and waiting for funding. We, we actually have, on that one, we actually have, it will require an easement through the neighboring property and the, the property owner has worked with the city for many years and is fine doing that. So it's just a matter of getting some funding to get that accomplished. Arkilian restrooms, they are in design, the, so they will be finished, bid and constructed in this coming, or in this fiscal year, so it'd be next calendar year. Those actually have, we were hoping to have M I D service there for electrical, I think it's P G N E, which is not the best news, but we'll deal with that. Transportation. All right, Danny, you're on. And I'm going to take a quick break.
Good evening, my name's Danny Reed and I'll be covering the transportation projects. My focus is mainly on the city's transportation projects, the C I P projects, as well as the C M A C and the Regional Measure B projects. So this is a list of the completed projects between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-five. There's been a number of C M A C related projects that we've been able to complete. They range from paving dirt alleys to sidewalk infill and even the downtown roundabout was included in there. There are also two C D B G projects that were also include, also included pavement improvements, where the pavement was rehabbed on both of those projects as part of the water line and sewer line improvements. There's been one Regional Measure B project completed during this time and that was the Wynton Parkway Southbound On-ramp Project, where we widened the on-ramp to accommodate turning movements onto ninety-nine. There have also been a number of capital projects, the Main Street Project, which did beautification improvements throughout the downtown area, as well as some maintenance projects just to improve the, the pavement and keep, keep them maintained to extend their life. So like, like the other capital improvement projects, here's the project work plan for transportation. Many of the projects on here, I'll go into further depth in the coming slides. But the, starting at the top, the top two projects were recently completed. They, they finished out about a week and a half ago. So then we have C M A C projects, the Max Foster Projects, the pedestrian infill project, as well as another sidewalk infill project for Stefani and J Streets. There's a number of Measure B projects on there as well. All the funding timeframe shown for the funded projects using either federal funds or Measure B funds match the, the programmed funding windows for each of those phases. You'll notice at the bottom for the Transit Center and Campbell Corridor Plan, they're listed with the P S R. This is a project study report and this is required because of the amount that's being requested. So any, M C A G requires a P S R to be completed on any Regional Measure B projects for projects that request over a million dollars. The only, the only exception to that is any projects that are rehabilitation projects, where you're rehabbing pavement or sidewalk facilities, they typically do not require a P S R.
Can you expand on the, on, on P S R? I mean, just for.
So a P S, a P S R basically looks at what project alternatives could be applied within a given project scope. So in this case, for the Transit Center, it would be what types of facilities would best work within the limitations of the property. It would also look at what's currently out there with the ACE train and that Transit Center E I R that's there. And it would look to dovetail those improvements so that they're more cohesive.
Then it picks an alternative.
Danny, quick question. How do we determine which streets or which areas that we want to prioritize for certain improvements? What does that process look like?
So for, for the funding component such as C M A C or the Regional Measure B, there's a number of documents that we need to look at, especially for the C M A C. And that's the criteria that follows the, the C M A C guidelines because it's congestion mitigation. So those are typically traffic flow improvements and project infill sidewalk projects or things like the roundabout or what have you. We also evaluate each one of the project areas to see what the ramifications are, are for using that type of funding. And then we also look at the R T P, the Regional Transportation Plan, which is somewhat of like the city's wish list on what they would like to accomplish over a large time span. And with, and that's typically one of the requirements for going after C M A C funding is that your project is listed on the R T P. There are ways to add it to the R T P if it's not there currently, if that's a priority. The other, the other component to all this is council involvement. Anytime a project is submitted for funding, it is presented, council and direction is requested. So that is another major component to this.
Let me add just a little something here on the C M A C. The congestion, mitigation, air quality, that's what that stands for. So reduce congestion and improve air quality. And it's a fairly narrow set of criteria to be able to qualify for receiving those, those funds. And Danny prepares all, all the applications for these, he's been very successful in obtaining funds for our agencies. And so you have to really tailor it to the requirements of the grant. You may have other areas in the city that you'd prefer to make improvement, but you can't because you won't qualify for that sort of grant that you're seeking. So everything has to be tailored to the, the requirements of the grant.
Yeah, so Danny, if you can, a, a prime example of that would be that alley that's right next to, let's see, it's off of Park and. Yeah, North Park, the one right there was by the Wolf Den.
Okay.
So for instance, you know, we tried to, you know, address the alleyway there, but because it, it's, it's, it's the patchwork of asphalt, there's just, we didn't meet the criteria because that, that eliminates us from having to be able to compete for those funds, correct? That's like, that's an example.
So, so for C M A C, in order to pave an alley, it has to be unpaved currently. And it, and it has to be used at a certain, a certain level each day. That, that criteria is all part of the guidelines as we're putting together the applications. The alley in question right now, it, it has too many, too many spots where patchwork has been done and A C has been put down to qualify for that. And so with that coupled with a low amount of daily traffic, it didn't meet the criteria. And so with that coupled with a low amount of daily traffic, it didn't meet the criteria.
Now, that doesn't mean that MCAG and those folks can't change it, but there has to be a consensus amongst the crew.
Which is not uncommon with the COGS. So now you have MCAG here, there's a bunch of them. And they all have somewhat different criteria. I mean, they're closed, but they do vary. And even within a COG, it does change. So some years, yeah, and we've done, I don't know how many alleys here, eight or 10, whatever, however many were done not that long ago. And I know now that, I, I don't believe MCAG is too fond of alleys now.
Most, most of the COGS have moved away from allowing for paving in the alleys. And with the last call for project, there was a limitation on the amount that would even be allotted for possible projects to pave alleys. So there, there are a lot of airborne restrictions now that are coming into play and questions related to doing those types of projects.
One question in regards to the Transit Center. I mean, that's, that's the estimated cost to, to build?
No. So that, that is, and we'll get into, I do have a slide on that one.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But just to, just quickly, on the Transit Center, the 1.9 million is what has been allotted for that project. Now, there are, there are other things that have come into place since that was originally programmed many years ago that are, are going to change the look of that project. And before we can start getting into construction or even requesting additional funds through Regional Measure V, we need to finish the PSR to come up with the study report that addresses both what the ACE train has in their EIR, as well as the, the overall look of things.
And then we also have to look at and consider the purchasing of the land.
That is part of that process.
And then, okay. And then just, I guess a general question is, how much is worth now versus how much is going to be worth in, or appraised at in two years or three years? But anyways, I guess that's another, a different.
Yeah, it keeps going up.
Yeah. Anybody have any extra cash right now? We could just buy a noun that'll.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to start working through the CMAC projects first and then move into the Regional Measure V projects that we have. So the first CMAC project is, is the Max Foster Multi-Use Path Projects. This is actually two projects, two separate projects that were funded. However, they will be bid together. Bidding documents are being put together right now to update the project improvements to where we're at today. The, the funding amounts below are, at the bottom of the screen are what was funded originally with the CMAC requests. Then we have a sidewalk infill project that we call the Livingston Pedestrian Improvements. And that consists of the blocks there in red. And currently, we're going through the design process on that project and environmental clearance. The project improvements have had their 30% design review meeting with Public Works and we've identified some areas where we need to address certain, certain aspects of the, of the infill project. And then recently, we received funding for another sidewalk infill project. This sidewalk infill project addresses the lack of sidewalks there along Stefani and a portion there at Arkelian on J Street. So the total amount of funds allocated shown right now is what's programmed on the F-Tip and that's covers PE at the moment. The city is currently working with MCAG to address some of the questions for the remainder of the funding that Caltrans has presented. Okay, so now, now we'll get into the Regional Measure V projects. It's important to, to know that all these projects that are listed in the Regional Measure V received funding during the last call for projects. So the last call for projects included the updates to the 2023 Implementation Plan. And they included, in this case, Hammont and Campbell. Hammont and Campbell was a, was master planned by the city. So as development came in, the developers would see what they needed to do in order to dovetail into the improvements that were, that were proposed by the city and covered underneath the Measure V grant. With this last call for projects, the city received additional fund, funding that's programmed to handle the Purple Area, which is to extend the pavement improvements all the way to Walnut on Hammont. Arco has already used the master plan documents to design their frontage improvements and has constructed that. Munglo is doing the same thing.
Danny, and before you move on to the next slide, good evening, Mayor, council members and the public. Noe Martinez from the City Engineers Office. And just to also mention in regards to the, the funding availability for this project, for this kind of projects, MCAG normally calls for, does it call for projects every two years? So we're expecting that this year, they're going to be doing another round of call for projects for Measure V regional funds, so we'll be looking for that.
Since we, we were kind of limited on time, you're going to have to speak a little faster. Of course, you're really good at it, so go ahead.
Okay, so I'll move quickly through, through the remainder of the Measure V projects. So Wynton Parkway Rehabilitation, this is a rehabilitation project. This was put in, originally it was put in whenever we did the 99 on-ramp. However, with some concerns from Caltrans, we separated this out and we submitted it for, during the last call for projects and it was awarded funded, funding two point, almost 2.2 million. And then this is our first PSR, which is Campbell Boulevard Rehabilitation. We're going to look at that corridor and come up with a few design alternatives that address connecting into the intersection master plan there at Hammont and Campbell with some Class 1 facilities and what those Class 1 facilities might look like and what the requirements and feasibility of putting them on whichever side, as well as addressing some widening improvements there on Campbell if it's possible. And then the Transit Center. So as, as we spoke earlier, it is up for a PSR. The 1.9 million dollars, a portion of that will be used to go through the PSR process and come up with the feasibility of, of the Transit Center and what improvements would be included.
All right, so with that said, and given that we're running out of time, I'm going to try and go through this part of the presentation as fast as possible. So to mention, one of the other major engineering responsibilities here for the city is processing new development projects. And, and then on the, on the following slides, we'll talk about other responsibilities as well. But for new, for development projects, engineering normally works closely with the planning department, city planner in regards to entitlements. And there's two types of projects that normally get processed for, for development. One is either going to be through a site plan review, or the other one is going to be through a mapping process where the, the city will create or process either parcel maps or subdivision maps. Now, as part of those two processes, engineering will generate conditions of approvals for the project to, to comply with and for final commissioning. So included in the process of approving development projects includes review and improvement plans that are prepared by the applicant's engineers, as well as their estimates. And then overseeing construction in terms of inspections and, and doing final acceptance. Just to, to highlight some of the notable projects that we've reviewed and commissioned in the last 10 years, including Ranch of San Miguel, Motel 6, the Livingston Community Health Site, Panda Express, Arco, Dutch Bros. And currently, current projects, Terra Santa Villa's Apartments, the Self-Help Apartments that I believe are, is being discussed later tonight. And then the Munglo Truck Stop that Danny mentioned earlier that will be constructed there at the corner of Hammont and Campbell. Next slide. So other engineering responsibilities include, like was mentioned before, preparing, doing grant procurement, basically pursuing funds for the city, developing city standards, developing city infrastructure maps, developing master plans and system modeling for water, sewer and storm drain, doing contract administration, and then doing, as I mentioned earlier, construction inspection for city projects. So with that said, I believe that will conclude the presentation.
Council, any questions? Well, thank you very much. Great presentation. And then if anybody else has any additional questions, please feel free to email city staff or the engineering department. And if there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next, after this presentation, we're going to retire real quick. We have a couple of items that they should be quick for closed session before we can come back out for regular session. So we're going to be in the back. Yes, questions, comments? No? Oh, okay. So we'll be back, we're going to go into closed session, we'll be right back.